And Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Stack, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the borders of this nation, under God, indivisible, clear and free of any
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's get to it.
All right, so let's see, do we have anyone sign up to speak this evening?
Uh, yes, John Faper.
Good evening, Mr. Faper, happy new year.
Good evening, you guys. Good evening. Um, at your January sixteenth meeting, there was discussion about the need for a formal resolution from the city regarding a postal or farm, one that is neither within the city limits nor adjacent to them. Additionally, I overheard a statement by Mr. Hedges suggesting that the city supported the solar farm project at the end of Dietrich Road. However, this is not entirely accurate. Mr. Khan previously sent a letter to the Kane County zoning, uh, Kane County zoning planner objecting to that very project, citing concerns similar to those now being raised against another solar farm proposal. In fact, this letter has already been sent with all of your names attached before you've even voted on the resolution before you tonight. This pattern of objections raises concerns about the city's broader approach to development and its relationship with neighboring communities. While every project deserves thoughtful consideration, the city's repeated resistance to considering those beyond its city boundaries without first engaging in open dialogue sends a message that cooperation with the surrounding areas is not a priority. This creates an atmosphere of distrust, making it more difficult to foster positive relationships and regional progress. I agree with trustee Kelly's suggestion that the city take a more collaborative approach when developments arise in and around Hampshire. Proactively engaging with neighboring municipalities, landowners, and stakeholders, we demonstrate a willingness to work together rather than taking positions that appear adversarial. A transparent and cooperative strategy would not only benefit Hampshire, but also strengthen the region as a whole. I urge the city to consider a more constructive approach, one that prioritizes open communication and mutual respect, so that Hampshire can build stronger relationships with its neighbors and encourage responsible growth that benefits the entire community. Thank you.
Uh, next, we have the minutes from January sixteenth to twenty twenty five. Please review them at this time. Any changes to the minutes? I'll entertain a motion to. There's no rule against it. Well, you can if you want. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Votes? Thank you. Next, uh, we have, uh, the meeting minutes or we have a bunch of motions on the, or post motions on the agenda for the executive session minutes that we talked about at the last, uh, board meeting in executive session. So, um, we don't need to discuss the contents of said minutes, but we'll just go down the, um, line here and call the roll. It will be a roll call vote for each one. So I will entertain a motion to approve the release of executive session many, meeting minutes from December seventh, twenty twenty three. So move. And questions, questions or comments? All right, uh, Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Coth?
No.
Mr. Matt?
I'm going.
Ms. Alstreni?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Fodor?
No.
Okay.
Biden.
Next, we have a mo-, I will entertain a motion to release the executive session min- meeting minutes from January eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Go move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coth?
No.
Mr. Matt?
No.
Ms. Alstreni?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Fodor?
No.
And Mr. Kelly?
No.
Motion fails, five, seven, six, seven.
Next, I will entertain a motion to approve the release of the executive session meeting minutes from February first, twenty twenty four. So move again.
Second.
Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Matt?
No.
Ms. Alstreni?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Fodor?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Coth?
No.
Motion fails, six, seven.
Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the release of executive session many, meeting minutes from June twentieth, twenty twenty four. Again. Questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Alstreni?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Fodor?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Coth?
No.
Mr. Matt?
No.
Motion fails, six, seven.
And finally, uh, motion, I will entertain a motion to approve the release of the executive session meeting minutes from August fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Go move. Okay, then, questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Ms. Fodor?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Coth?
No.
Mr. Matt?
No.
Ms. Alstreni?
No.
Motion fails, six, seven.
We'd just like to say, I appreciate that, and I would like to clarify, this is, again, the state-driven process statutorily, and there are a multitude of reasons why meeting minutes should not be released. The biggest one that I would say would be if there's ongoing litigation or ongoing real estate or ongoing employee conversations. So for those that may be watching and wondering why the meeting minutes were just all voted down, that's why. Anything you'd like to add, Ms. Alstreni?
No, you covered all the bases.
All right, by the way, the guy sitting in Mr. Vaselli's seat is Mr. Eric Stack. He's filling in tonight for Mr. Vaselli, who had an emergency come up. So, um, we're gonna enjoy our time together. Mr. Hedges, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve dispersment of impact fees for the Hampshire Township Cemetery in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-eighth cents. Uh, you have a letter from our chief, Herman, on page nine of your packet. These are funds that the village accumulates and then discharges among its clients.
Uh, Mr. Hedges, disappointed clarification. In this instance, he is trustee Herman of the Hampshire Township Cemetery Board.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any question?
I'll make a motion to approve the dispersment of impact fees at the Hampshire Cemetery Board.
Second. Questions or comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Alstreni?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion fails, six, seven.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration of a motion to approve partial reimbursement for style on state for side grant in the amount of fifteen thousand, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents on page ten of your agenda sup-, excuse me, of your packet. Uh, you have a, uh, memorandum from Mr. Khan explaining, uh, why they're asking for, um, partial reimbursement. Uh, this, this part of the project is completely finished and they're waiting for, is it the, the, uh?
The onyx.
Which is on back orders, so they're having trouble getting that. And I believe we did this once before with, uh, for the, um, Hampshire Social as well, partially.
Does anyone have any questions?
I do. Um, it says on page thirteen, um, that the, that the door is not actually done. Has that been changed since January thirteenth?
I can comment on that if it would help.
Sure, please, Bill.
Um, the door is there, it's been ordered, it's arrived. The general contractor decided it would be a better idea not to install it for the final repairs. They got a lot of tradesmen coming in and out, and they're worried about damaging the door in the process. So the G C pulled aside and said, we're not gonna put this in. It's gonna go in, but only after everything else is done, so.
They wanna bang up the door that's there existing until?
You gotcha.
Sounds.
Yep.
That sounds good. Um, my concern is that this was just signed three and a half months ago, knowing that everything had to be done before there was payment. So it's not like this was done a year ago, it's just three and a half months. And this is supposed to be, I guess, um, done in twenty-three days from today. So why are we rushing to give the money now if it's twenty-three days and we can wait to make sure that everything is done correctly?
Um, trustee Alstreni, the twenty-three days is the, I, that's the first time period, but a lot of these projects go way beyond that because of delays in craftsmanship and contractors. So there's no guarantee that it would be finished, and he doesn't expect it to be finished in twenty-three days.
When does he expect it to be done?
Do you have a better time than that?
The onyx company has been, how do I say this, non-committal. Apparently, this time of year, there's a big demand for those, uh, like temporary breezeways that they fabricate to stop the cold air from coming in, and they are just overwhelmed. Um, this is, I've already, when I say the seasonal work, you know, the normal stuff, but, um, they've been non-committal in terms of when they're actually gonna get it fab- get them in line for production.
So this could be May or June?
Possibly.
Until the next bunch of year.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Uh, just one in a similar vein. On the construction thing, it says signage still work to be done. Is that?
That's in production. Uh, there was a delay with the sign, uh, the painter, uh, but he's currently working on it.
Okay.
Yep.
So the idea would be they'd come back for the remainder of this on the full completion.
Correct. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve partial reimbursement for style on state. So move. Second. Questions, comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Uh, Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Alstreni?
No.
Uh, Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
And Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Motion fails, five, seven.
Thank you. That would answer this. We would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving a variance for five seventy-four North State Street to permit a fence in the front yard. Uh, in your packet on page fifteen, you have an agenda supplement as well as the planning and zoning commission minutes, or excuse me, our findings of fact for this project. Mr. Khan, would you like to explain this?
Uh, yeah, so just, I wanna give a little history about how it started to where we are now. So Mr. Marquez is a property owner who's here in attendance tonight presenting, pushing for him later, um, applied for a permit in November twenty point, or received the permit in November twenty twenty four. Um, what happened was the plaque showed the fence be along the perimeter of the, generally along the perimeter of the lot, and then the permit approval documents say it's approved with the condition that the fence cannot be the front yard. So you had two conflicting documents, both saying they were approved. The plaque being approved was shown with the location of the fence, a non-compliant location, and then the permit approval document showing, say, stating, there's no fence permitted in the front yard. So we had conflicting doc-, documents. Um, Mr. Marquez proceeded with what was shown on the plaque of survey, put post holes along perimeter of the property, um, and then called in for a postal inspection, which is required for a permit. Um, Safe Belt, who we use for permitting and inspections, went out there and approved the post holes, including the ones in the front yard. Um, so there was a, another misstep where it could have been caught by Safe Belt and told me, you know, unfortunately, you can't have it in the front yard, so just put the dirt back in the front yard post holes. Um, that did not happen, so Mr. Marquez proceeded with installing the post in the front yard. Um, at that time, I was notified of the property, it's a stop work order on it, and, uh, Mr. Marquez asked to apply for a variance to go through the process to potentially allow the fence to be permitted in the front yard. Um, the planning zoning commission held a sub-, uh, public hearing last month, and they recommended denial of the various, fought for four to one. They did not believe, uh, Mr. Marquez and Beth of Brighton's facts or hardship. Um, they believe that since it was clearly stated on the permit approval document, that should not be on the front yard, that should have been caught by the homeowner. Uh, staff did recommend approval of the various because of the two steps where it was shown approved on the platter survey and also the postal section passed. Uh, so those are, and two, with staff's opinion, that's a hardship. Uh, but the planning zoning commission recommended denial, um, and now it's in front of you for final action.
Uh, for those of you who are not familiar with this property, it's at the corner of Allen and State, on the north, uh, south west one.
I remind the board that Bill Rossetti, who writes, doesn't he still write our letter for the, for the water department? He had the same problem. He installed the fence, he had to pay out of his pocket to remove it, out of his own pocket. We have turned down on this board probably forty other people that have either had front yard or, uh, on a, on a weird wedge on property, side yard and front yard fence, and they've been denied.
I, I believe that there was some culpability there from B and F at the time. I think B and F paid, as, I know Bill Rossetti had to pay the portion of it, but I think that B and F realized that it was their doing and they paid a portion of the removal. Is that not true?
I believe they paid a hundred percent of the loan.
Okay. So, that being said, if we were to deny this, what's Safe Belt's commitment to rectifying the situation?
So, I had a discussion with Safe Belt today. They'll take responsibility and pay for a portion of the fence that cannot be installed for the material and labor for that, for that portion.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I have a question. In your, uh, brief to us, in the verbal brief, you said it's staff's recommendation to approve the variance because of the two, uh, issues, and in the supporting documents, it says the village staff is not recommending any conditions of approval. So which is the recommendation?
The conditions of approval that, like, has to be done within six months, uh, so.
Okay, so you're, you're recommending, or staff is recommending approval, but with no conditions?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
If I could ask, then, on the, uh, the permit itself, the permit said on it when it was filled out, et cetera, that it was conditioned on the fact it cannot be in the front?
Correct.
So.
Not the permit application, the permit approval letter.
The permit approval specifically stated, and that was sent to the homeowner?
Correct.
It said you cannot have it in the front yard.
Correct.
So that was mailed to?
Uh, it's on mail, it's downloaded through the portal, so the electronic PDF that the homeowner or the contractor can download from the portal, and then they, they should be, all contractors and homeowners should read that document before they begin the report.
Okay, so that was the first thing that he got from us that said you have, it was conditioned on the fact you couldn't have it in the front yard.
Correct.
Um, our ordinance states that there are no fences in the front yard.
Right.
This is on our main street that goes right through the center of town. Do we have any other fences in the front yard anywhere up and down State Street?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so visually, you would have seen that you cannot have a fence. And is it on our ordinances that are online specifically state that you cannot have a fence in the front?
It does.
Okay. Um, I would be voting against this, um, for all of those reasons. I think there's enough notification that the person knew, the property owner should have known then, um, but I do think Safe Belt has made multiple mistakes that this board keeps having to address, and it is an uncomfortable spot for the board, and it puts us in a position that we have to defend our ordinances because of a mistake of a contractor. So, very uncomfortable and very disappointed in Safe Belt.
So that was my next question. This is what, uh, what, I mean, the staff, they can ensure this kind of stuff stops happening. I know with the first time with the zoning, where they were reviewing the zoning with the sheds, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we made adjustments to what their scope is, and then now they're, they're dealing with the zoning as well, when it comes to approving building permits. What, what happened, I mean?
We met, we met just this week. We sat at this table for a good two hours and went over all the procedures and how this can be avoided, uh, and we went over how it did happen and how they made two errors, and how the forms are also a little misleading, so we don't believe that the homeowner did anything intentional, for sure. Um, because Safe Belt has agreed to stand behind it, and we intend to enforce them with them.
So you're comfortable moving forward that they're gonna do something?
Yes, they've been a great contractor. You've heard us talk about them. They've been with us almost five years now, and we highly recommend.
And then, you know, I, we have had issues with B and F in the past where it's come to the board as well. Unfortunately, this is like, it's keep coming, because it was very, it was very quick that we kept having to deal with it. So I'm glad that you guys jumped out.
The other issue was not their fault, it was our fault as staff. We never asked them to do, uh, plan reviews for fence, or, for fence per, sorry, for shed permits.
Shed permits.
And those were two pads that have been poured, and then the homeowners didn't build the sheds for like, two years, and then two years later, we had Safe Belt doing it. We assigned them that task, and so that was not their error, that was a oversight fight with our former staff. Now, our new staff caught that.
And just to be clear, that, uh, if this board decides to vote against this, Safe Belt will be handling the cost of removal and restoration. And the cost of their, his materials as well?
They will make him whole.
Okay, good.
Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, not just the removal of the post, but the restoration of the area where the posts were, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, was the homeowner charged to, to file for a variance?
No.
So there was no cost out of the homeowner's pocket to go through this process? What? I've seen the fence that's going up, it's a two, two-panel fence, it's not a privacy fence, it's not blocking any views going in. It looks almost like a fence you'd have on horse property, right, where it's just two, two-by-sixes or whatever it may be going up. What's the, the purpose in staff's opinion of not having front yard fences?
Course is visibility, so when you're backing out of a driveway to make sure you see, aren't from the traffic, and that's also what I, called suburban aesthetic, is where you don't have necessarily have front yard fences in suburban areas, which is a common, you have, you know, open landscape, open front yard view, so those are the two main reasons.
Okay, and the, according to the plot, I believe, I'm making an, I hope educated guess, it is not in an Eastman?
It's not in an Eastman.
So it's, it, it ends before the Eastman begins against State Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion of, uh, approving an ordinance for a variance for five seventy-four North State. Go move.
Second.
Questions, annual comments? Ms. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Coth?
No.
Mr. Matt?
No.
Ms. Alstreni?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
Ms. Fodor?
No.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Motion fails, six, seven.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving a text amendment to section two dash four dash.
Can I, can I ask, um, what's the process for the homeowner? The homeowners here in attendance, what's the process?
We'll be in touch with him tomorrow, they've been in contact, direct contact, so.
Okay, so we're not gonna leave him hanging any longer? This is done and we're gonna, not we, but I'm saying this process.
We'll be in touch with him tomorrow, they've been talking every day, he's well aware of what's going on.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, Mr. Hedges.
That's all right. Uh, we would ask your consideration of an ordinance approving a text amendment to section two dash four dash two of the Hampshire Municipal Code Regarding Speed Limits on Kelly Road and State Street. There's quite a bit of information in your packet. We've talked about this several times, the board has already voted to put up, uh, no parking signs on Kelly Road, as well as the park signs, which are all installed. Uh, by the way, apparently somebody didn't quite like our signs, they cut two of them off of the ground last week, um, but Dave put them back in.
Mr. Hedges?
Yes. You said, you said.
Let me go back.
Uh, with that, we would ask your consideration of ordinance approving a license agreement to Hampshire Historical Society, uh, on property here at two thirty-four State Street. This is on page thirty-two of your packet, and, uh, if you recall, this was on the agenda last week, it was tabled, uh, because we had to make an amendment at the request of the Historical Society on the, about the insurance, but this is just for them to be able to use the space upstairs and have, so that the village is protected for liability purposes, and Mr. Swallow was taking a look at this lease and signed up.
Fairly borne, I play it, Pierce. Do you have any concerns, Mr. Swallow?
No.
I have a question.
Sure.
I thought you weren't doing much with upstairs, or there were like, concerns of either, is it heated, not heated, has there been repairs? Like, we were purposely not doing things upstairs.
We've actually made a lot of improvements upstairs.
Yeah.
You know, we, this past winter, we added, um, or last fall, we added air conditioning and heating upstairs, modular units.
Okay.
Uh, one in the Historical Society and one in the records department, so we can work up there year-round now.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
I just knew that there had been concerns in the past, I wanna make sure whatever those were.
They've done a lot in the back to organize that area, they have a nice desk in there, it's, it's a pretty nice workable area now.
Weather sealed, it done some lighting stuff. And obviously, we've tried over the last, since you've been here, we've tried a little bit each year to try to put a little bit of money back into the building, so that we focus on even getting usable space.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a couple.
Good.
Um, on page thirty-eight, it's titled, his, uh, Hampshire Historical Center. I think that's just a title, it should be society.
I believe you're correct.
Okay, so we could fix that as the heading. Um, my second question deals with the fact, paragraph D, that it's, um, it's a seven-month contract, which just seemed a little strange, and then it ended August thirtieth and not thirty-first. So I'm just questioning why it's not a full year, why it's seven months? Is there?
That's what Mr. Vaselli recommended.
Is, is there any reasoning for that?
I was shocked.
It's a lot of work to do a contract for seven months.
It was, it was.
It, so it automatically renews. Um, all right, so August thirtieth is kind of a strange date. Um, all right, then I have, um, on page five, um, I'm sorry, page forty-two, um, in L, that the licensee is solely responsible for personal property taxes. Are we separating?
There, there aren't any personal property taxes, so that, that would be assignment statement.
Okay.
It's a, it's a standard contract.
Okay, 'cause it is in a public building, but they are not a public entity. All right. Um, and, I, I mean, I love the Historical Society, I think they're a fantastic group. Um, but my, I have a little bit of a concern, um, allowing keys to the village hall to somebody unless we're gonna be locking different doors, and not that I would trust or mistrust anybody from the Historical Society, but I think it sets a precedence.
We have, uh, let me just say that we, they've had access upstairs through their lock system.
Okay.
Over many years, forever, as long as I've been here, I guess.
Okay.
Uh, we do have a system now where there's a lock on the Historical Society and our records department.
Oh.
So they can get in the front door, and they can get in the Historical Society, and those are the only doors that they can get in.
And the keypad, the keypad that they would be entering, they're not getting physical keys. They're getting a code to the building. So that access can be tracked and that kind of thing, if there is anything that comes up. But, um, at night, the clerk's office is locked, the offices are backdoor locked. So if they come in the front door, they go upstairs. Um, and then they can get into their building, or their room, and that's it.
Okay.
And they're typically not here when we're not in the building anyway.
I know. I did, it's not the Historical Society at all, cuz I have fully, full faith in them, et cetera. It's just a contract to allow use of the building.
I, I just felt, I mean, we hadn't had any agreement up there, and they've been working without an agreement. I just felt it was better for both organizations to have something.
No, I, I, I agree with that. I just, there's a couple questions that I have in there. Um, there's also nothing in there about overnight use. And so, we don't have people in here overnight, but, you know. If, if there are members that have access to it, I just. You know, we have something in there about parking and overnight parking, which made me think, you know, overnight use, and there's no overnight use. It's not specifically stated in there. I mean, we could have our own employees that are here till three, four in the morning, so.
Has that?
Yes, I'm sure it has, so. I just wanted to make note of that.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain an ordinance approving, um, a license agreement with the Hampshire Historical Society with the change of center on page thirty. So move. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you. Next, we go back to the sign discussion already in practice.
Okay.
So we, we're at the point of the story where two were removed forcibly, and Dave Keane saved the day. We put two signs up.
Yes, that's correct. And then you have in your packet on page, I believe it's on page forty-seven. A lot of information actually about Kelly Road, probably more than you need. Um, the only reason that's there is that we had the EEI put on, um, a monitoring device just to observe the speed limits.
Mm-hmm.
And we've been working with the township as well, because some of that property, that road is their property, cuz they're responsible as well. Uh, but at this point now, we, staff has come to the, the agreement that between the chief and Dave Sterrett, myself, that, uh, we believe that the recommendations here are. Are well founded, as well as the, um, new stops, excuse me, new speed limit signs on State Street. So we're asking your consideration of both of these changes.
In the agenda supplement here, it says that the township's been involved in this.
Right, and they're in co-agreed, and we'll be reducing the speed limit all the way to full length of, uh, Kelly Road.
They're lowering it to what?
Pardon me?
They're lowering it to what speed?
Um.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Thirty-five miles per hour.
Thirty-five, sorry, my eyes are crossed here.
I just wanna mention one thing, and I know we mentioned this the last time we talked about this. That road has become really busy now that, um, Prairie Ridge has, has become a, is. Really building. There's a lot of high school kids that go that direction out, and that's a direct route to the high school. Um, down Kelly Road and then just, uh, catch them, or sorry, uh, with there. So there's quite a bit more traffic there that we've noticed in development. It's important.
But can I ask why we put so many no parking signs on Kelly Road?
Yeah, because the residents up there were really concerned that the soccer fields across the street draw a lot of traffic. There's no parking right that, right now.
Could park even with a four-wheel drive.
But where the parking signs are, that you could park actually on the shoulder. Where we didn't put signs, you'd be down in the ditch. And people's property.
Yes.
We all approved it where we put the signs. That was approved at a prior meeting. This is just about the speed limit.
No, no, I was just asking the question.
Question on page forty-seven, any analysis? I just have a question about weight number four, average speed fell below twenty-four miles per hour for all hours except from eleven PM to one AM. Is that?
Question.
Well, the question is, so what was it? If it was below twenty-four miles per hour every other time, what about those two hours?
It was less than twenty-four miles per hour.
No, it says it fell below that for all hours except those two hours. So it implies that it's higher.
Anybody taking a backroads that shouldn't be on a main road and get caught with lights off cruising?
Well, I was wondering if it was sixty-six or is it a hundred and ten? Like, what's, what's happening? You know, like, are we having?
Mr. Paulson's here in person and willing to.
It's a typo on the memo. Forty-two, if you look at this cover sheet of our memo. Not twenty-four. The average speed was below forty-two.
Forty-two.
Uh, except for that half hour. And I would have to look in the report to see.
Okay.
That was, there's, just to point out, there was an aberration.
I needed more information. Okay, but thank you.
Very much.
Okay, any other questions? I'll entertain an ordinance approving a text amendment to section two dash four-two of the Municipal Code regarding speed limits on Kelly Road and State Street. Again. What, questions or comments?
I have one. We've talked about Kelly Road. We didn't discuss State Street at all, and that one going down to twenty-five miles an hour from Allen. We talked through that one quick, cuz that's a pretty big change. The other one's only a.
It's a five mile.
Ten, a ten mile.
It's a five mile approach.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're just taking it from twenty, from thirty. There's just a short area. It's forty miles per hour up north. State Street is, and then south of the creek is twenty-five. There's a short area there just north of the creek where it's thirty. There's one sign going southbound that says thirty miles per hour.
Oh.
And that's the one that we, we had some, some businesses up in that area, approached us about a month ago. Uh, that they, they believe there's more people speeding out of town and speeding into town. Obviously downtown has become a lot more busy. In downtown, we're very pleased with the way traffic being managed, thanks to our original engineering of downtown State Street. But we did feel that the twenty, well, we put, first of all, we put a speed line monitoring sign out here on State Street last week for about a week.
Thank you, Village Gilbert.
Yeah, and Garret from Village Gilbert. I hope to buy one next year in budget. Um, and, uh, after that, uh, we believe that it's good just to reduce it from twenty-five to twenty-five and then to forty all the way up. So we'll just eliminate probably three hundred yards of, there are four, thirty miles per hour.
Gotcha, so it'll go from forty to twenty.
So basically be, we, not basically, we'll be removing the thirty mile per hour sign and putting in twenty-five up, and then putting one additional twenty-five mile per hour on a. Northbound on a telephone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I have a first or a second, man?
Yes, you do.
Okay, this clerk can you call the vote please?
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Spouse Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration with ordinance approving an extension. To an intergovernmental agreement with the Northern Illinois Purchasing Co-op for five years. You can find this on page sixty-six of your packet, and Ms. Lyons will explain what this is and what we're doing now.
Um, so as Mr. Khan, uh, pointed out in the agenda supplement, the village board, um, approved ordinance forty, thirteen dash thirty-five. Um, entering into an agreement with Northern Illinois Purchasing Cooperative, or becoming part of that. Um, the village actually belonged to the predecessor purchasing cooperative even prior to that time. Um, it has been used solely, um, for electrical purposes. In other words, we, uh, gather our accounts as the kilowatts used and, um. Band together with the other communities that are listed in the agreement, Johnsburg, Huntley. Lakewood, Genoa, a bunch of, bunch of communities, mostly located in McHenry County. It used to be called McHenry County Purchasing Cooperative. Um, and, uh, so we add all our kilowatt hours up and, um, try to seek bids for, uh. Electrical, uh, purchasing power at less than the common rates. So, um, we're just trying to extend the agreement. You know, it's kind of a in- interesting electrical, um, environment, I'll call it. So we may not, um, actually go out for bid. Our contracts currently that are in place. Um, and in May, I believe, of twenty twenty-five, so we'll be investigating whether or not it's unofficial to, well, for bid in the spring.
Last time we signed this was October fourth, twenty nineteen, I see in the packet. Anybody have any questions? Comments? I'll entertain an ordinance approving the extension to an intergovernmental agreement with the Northern Illinois Purchasing Cooperative for the next five years. So move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Aye. I could even, uh, all in favor, correct?
Yes, you could. I mean, a roll call vote is preferred, but you can do a voice vote. This is a, this is a contract, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay, well, roll call vote then. Sorry, I'm trying to save the clerk's hand.
Spouse Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Motion, pass six zero.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration. Of a resolution. Approving a professional services agreement with EEI Inc. For phase two design engineering services for Safe Routes to School project in the amount of thirty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. You can find this on page eighty-two of your packet. And Mr. Paulson, would you like to explain this quickly?
Yes, well, Safe Routes have been going on for some time. We did. Uh, in early January, we got our clear, our cultural clearance signed off from IDA. Which allowed us to, uh, submit the preliminary design report. Which is the report that completes phase one. So that is submitted to, uh, to IDA. And it's under review. And so now we're positioned to, uh, begin with the phase two design, which is the engineering plan and specifications. Um, so that's what this, uh, service agreement is for. And we're currently on the schedule for a, uh, September letting, which would be, um, you know, awarding contract to IDA in September. Uh, the phase two process works differently than the phase one process. They have a scheduled. They have scheduled dates, so if you're turning your, your pre-final plans by, uh, given day near the end of March, they get comments by. In a set amount of time, if you turn in your, um. Your draft final plans by date, you get comments, and then if you turn in your final plans by date, you're on the September letting. So we have a schedule. Uh, included in the PSA that shows that we, you know, can meet all those dates easily for phase two, stay on the September letting. One wrinkle is that they, there will be a date. In June, and if we don't have final approval on phase one, uh, we'll automatically, you know, get kicked to the next letting in November, so. That is outside of our control. The, uh, personnel doing the review said that they would get comments to us by the end of March on phase one. I believe we could turn it around in a week. And then, uh, my transportation staff says. Usually, in a month or two, you can get final approval, so it should put us right. Um, right there, meeting the June deadline, just in September.
I do have a question.
Yes.
With the current atmosphere in Washington DC versus Springfield, Illinois, uh. How, how guaranteed are we that IDA's gonna give us the money? We do the letting, the whole stop, you know, you know, at the, during the job or at the end of the job, IDA says, oh, by the way, we don't have the money to pay you.
I can't, I don't know.
That's, uh.
Safe Routes is a federal funded.
Yes, so there's a federal fund.
Well, that's, I mean, everything else has been.
That's the number one, uh, concern down in Springfield. I was on legislative calls this week, and it's, they're, they're, all eyes are on the White House, watching what they're doing with all the federal funding. So, I don't think.
Well, Prinsker's throwing gas and fire, ain't he, nope.
No. Be that as it may, um, they're all watching whether or not the, how the federal funds affect, um, all of the grants locally, and then the federal funding. And the pass-through funds for the different organizations throughout the state and the agencies and that kind of stuff, so, I mean, I, I was on the call. Last Wednesday, was it? Wednesday or Tuesday was an emergency call with the governor's, uh, the deputy governor and all the mayors in the state, and we were all talking about it. It's been a very hot, hot conversation, but the answer. That, uh, Tim didn't have the answer to, no one in Springfield has the answer to, because it's so fluid, so it's just something they're paying attention to.
If I can just jump in and just say that I know of different entities and groups that have gotten letters from the, um. People working on the grant, in charge of the grants, whichever that is, to say that we're having to put a project on hold that hasn't broken grounds yet. So I know those letters have gone out to certain projects, and if we haven't gotten one, I think that's a very good thing.
Unlike the one that we got for the special census this week, where.
Yes.
We cut the check for the three hundred and eighty-five thousand for the special census, and now there's a hiring freeze, so they can't hire personnel for the census, so.
They giving us our money back?
Uh, no.
That could be freed up before this, before it's too late, or as long, as long as it gets freed up by around March first, we should be okay.
Did they already cash the check?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, they could buy ECH.
Last June.
That'd be ridiculous, of course. They didn't have it on shelf waiting. Thank you, Mr. Paulson, for being here and, uh, explaining it. Does anybody have any questions for the real version of Mr. Paulson, or the three-D version, isn't it? A trustee voter calling?
Yeah, Mr. Paulson, on the, on page ninety-two of the packet, the attachment C, estimating a level of effort.
Mm-hmm.
The CCBD coordination shows two hours for a project manager, and then there's the additional ten thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. To huff and huff for this, and I, I wasn't sure what that was, so when I started reading the huff and huff agreement. Saw that this is for them to test the soil to see that we can. Uh, dispose of it off-site and that it was uncontaminated. What's leading EEI to believe this may be? Soil, it's being tested since it's in a neighborhood and not at a gas station. I just haven't seen this type of a thing. For other projects that we've done, whether it's on Route twenty near truck stops or other areas.
It's a, a standard requirement on the federal projects on, now under the State Street recirculation, we were able to avoid the requirement, because we have so little material. Material that we're removing, just a little bit of curb and gutter being removed. Um, but in this case, we have, you know, there's, it would be all the material that has to be removed in order to install the, um. The sidewalk, so unless you're in, uh, undeveloped agricultural land. You have to go through the CCBD process, and you have to do the testing.
So what does the, the over ten thousand dollars cover? Like, actually cover itself? Is it just the test?
It's the soil borings, the testing, and then the report, and then the documentation. That has to be provided to the contractor that he has to bring with every load he takes to a, a licensee.
That's just a packet that he's gonna have, correct?
Correct.
It's just one time that they're making that.
Well. It will depend on the soil testing. Depending on, if, if something is triggered in the soil testing, uh, that.
There's lab work involved, too.
Yes.
They're not gonna test it in the back of the pickup.
Correct.
Going to the lab. I understand that. How many soil borings does it include?
Um, there is an exhibit in.
Twenty borings with a max depth of two feet?
That seems about, about right.
Okay.
There's an exhibit in there. It's got, um, uh. Another, because it. We'll be removing, you know, about approximately a foot of materials. For the, you know, the size of these. Six inches of stone, four inches of.
Any other questions?
Just one brief one, just the approvals that we're waiting for, just so I'm clear, it's from IDA, so we're going to present, and then they have to approve, right?
Correct.
That's, okay, I just wanna make sure, cuz I know it's going back and forth, I just wanna make sure it was IDA that we, okay, thanks.
What drawings have already been done for your earlier submissions that you had to do to IDA?
Drawings are just, um. Um. They're not, they're just a layout drawing without any, uh, total graphic information or survey information. So they're just more or less a sketch. That concept.
Any other? I'll entertain a resolution approving the professional services agreement with EEI for phase two engineering for Safe Routes to School Project. Be completed sometime before I die. So.
I, I make that joke in jest. Thank you very much for all of this. I mean, seriously, it's been, uh, I spent an ordeal, I know, for all of you guys, but I, I appreciate it. Um. You call the vote please.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Scott Strini?
Aye.
Motion, pass six zero.
We worked so hard on that, trying to get enough community influence to get that done, like, within the first few weeks of.
It's been like two years since we got all those letters.
It's been even more, it's like the first thing I worked at when I, when I became mayor, and then the trustees, when they first had on, that was one of the first projects that we. Worked on together, and we were really hoping to have it done before the end of this term, and it's not gonna happen.
Well, we got our grant. It was the second time we tried, and we didn't, we didn't get it the first time.
Right.
Now we know what happens when you do get.
Right.
Okay, with that, we ask your consideration of a resolution approving the professional, oh, sorry, we just developed. A resolution approving a release of performance guarantee bond for Old Dominion Project at two hundred Ryan Drive. Uh, Mr. Khan?
The Old Dominion is part of the project, it's a structural outfall for the, um, for the stormwater management. Um, that's my knowledge, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Paulson.
So, uh, if you comply with the stormwater ordinance, uh, they have to construct an outfall. Um, across the neighboring property. It's basically a, a grain pile to deal with the nuisance flows from their detention basin. Um, and initially, the, the downstream property owner did not. Was not going to allow them access and grant them an easement to construct the outfall. So the ordinance has a provision that. Uh, it's all quickly puts the bond for periods of two years to cover the cost of the outfall. And if the outfall, uh, easement is not granted within two years, the bond would be released, and they don't have to comply with that part of the ordinance. However, they reached an agreement with the landowner in, uh, October, I believe. And they completed construction at the end of December. So the outfall is now constructed, so the bond is no longer.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion approving the release of a performance guarantee bond for Old Dominion.
So moved.
Second. Questions or comments? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Fodor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Coe?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Spouse Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Motion, pass zero.
Thank you. With that, we would ask your consideration for a resolution objecting and protesting. Two commercial solar farm facilities projects at sixteen. At North eight forty-five and seventeen North zero thirty, Rankin Road. Uh, in Hampshire, King County, Illinois. Uh, this was discussed at length under new business, the last board meeting, and staff was instructed to draft these resolutions. Um, you do have the resolutions in your packet. How about you answer any questions?
Can I just add that this resolution was, staff was instructed to. Put this resolution on the, on the agenda to supplement the letter already sent to the developer or the potential project, uh, people proposing the project, and. King County. This is just a more formal procedure.
And I will remind the board that we met with this company, Mo and I met with the company and listened to their projects.
Every day.
That's right.
Um, we are. Banding together with our fellow communities around here, um, Pinky Grove has also done, uh, it was. Because it exists in our planning area. And it is adjacent to their planning area. Pinky Grove was involved as well. Pinky Grove also sent a letter in, um. Disapproval and passed a resolution. Uh, a week or so before we even talked about it. That's how opposed they were to it, um, so. Does anyone have any questions about the process? Have any questions about the documentation? Have any questions to the letter provided by? Mr. Schaefer, or derived from Mr. Schaefer? That's part of standard, uh, practice what the village does when, when it's asked questions about a project.
Yeah, I, um, I don't know. I need to go back and watch the video, cuz I don't remember us saying, send the letter. I remember us talking about putting it on here. Um, I may be totally wrong, though, so I may. Be incorrect in my memory, and if I am, I apologize, but if a letter was sent by staff before we actually voted on something, I have a problem with that.
No, so the letter, the letter was sent as part of the regular development process. And they said. and they said it is, as staff normally does. Again, board is not ever usually involved in this project, this process. When a project is within our planning area, the staff entertains it and listens to it and, and looks at it as opposed to, and, and goes and evaluates it based on the comprehensive plan use and stuff like that. It's, that is the normal process. And then the staff would send a letter saying we approve or we disapprove.
Staff, but what he's asking is, he doesn't recall the board giving approval to sign our names to that letter.
The letter was sent before we had even talked about this.
Okay. And so that, I guess that's my question outside of this.
Do you have the letter with our?
It's right, it's dated the twenty-fourth.
So outside of this process, for other developments, as President Reed was saying.
Your name's on our, on the letterhead.
Uh, a, as President Reed was saying, the normal course of business is staff will send a letter on behalf of the village without involvement of the board, giving a recommendation, approval or denial of various projects.
That's correct. And we did, we did consult with the mayor as well. And what I learned from the mayor was that there was this effort among all the communities to band together, not just Hampshire. But we learned that way before we even sent the letters. But it was after the conversation that we had here, so we knew what the board's intention.
So these, these type of letters have been sent and never been brought to the board before as well.
Pres, presuming matters.
For others.
For all kinds of zoning within, within our planning area, within a mile and a half of the village, King County always asks our opinion. Uh, and I don't recall ever coming to the board before because we typically know, we typically tell them, yes, if you want to build that, you have to annex it to the village.
Completely understood. That's why I'm saying this is not unusual. This is standard operating procedure for the staff to send these out. The difference is for this particular one, there's an ask to have an official ordinance by the board.
Yes.
Rather than just.
Yeah, because King County has started approving its solar farms against the wishes of many of the municipalities now. And so we learned this from, from, uh, um, Gilbert's, when they actually attended, it got past the planning zoning uh, committee meeting and then went all the way to the board level and the mayor and their, their attorney attended and they were able to kill it at, at the board level. So we intend to attend all three of the meeting meetings as well as the board meeting and object.
So what is the, what is your opinion, Mr. Hedges, that something like an ordinance would be differently than an official statement on behalf of the village?
Uh, well, first of all, it's a resolution.
Sorry, a resolution. Thank you.
What it does is it, it says that, look, our six-member, seven-member village board voted on this. We believe it has more weight than a, a letter from staff with.
Yeah, and, uh, in speaking with different officials at the county, that's what they say has weight. So because the state statute is written as such, um, they don't really have a whole lot to even deny this type of thing based on what has happened down in Springfield with the approvals that these give. And so they have asked, uh, mayors and leaders to get resolutions. They're non-binding resolutions, right?
No, I understand.
So, um, it's just a more formal process to this, that's all.
Is, is this property, and forgive me for not knowing, is it in anybody else's planning area? The reason why I ask is I know on other maps we've talked, there's overlap of.
Yes, this is, this is within a mile and a half, Pinky, and they've objected also.
So they've passed a resolution as well?
And they formally, they, they presented it and passed it all in one night.
Okay.
And that's, that's, that's how they did it. And I didn't feel that that was right to put a resolution on the agenda without having the discussion amongst the board to get your feelings and try to be as transparent as possible. And so that's why we did it in the way that we've done it. Um, I know that, um, this is a little out of the norm. That's why, again, you see the letters and this and that, but it's part of the development process that we pay our staff to do. And they weigh in on these things all the time. And so this is, this is a hundred percent out of the norm because it's we're trying to get involved with it to send a statement. And again, it's not being opposed to solar farms or anything. It's trying to band together with our fellow neighbors that are going through this and trying to get the state to understand that this really does impact future development in ways that we cannot undo.
Yeah. Mr. Hedges, you said you met with the developer, right? Was there ever discussion of other locations that they may be interested?
They came in with this specific location with plea proposal all completed and that's all they wanted to talk about.
Did staff offer other locations or considerations or ask if they would consider other locations?
No, that was not the intent of me.
They came in with everything loaded to talk about these parcels and the, and the reasons why they picked these parcels and the value that it's going to provide to these parcels and the fact that they're not buildable and all of this other stuff that they had made their mind up for us.
I, I would like to add one other point. Uh, this week we met with another developer, another property owner here in Tango, five or six different properties. And, uh, he owns property adjacent to these two, is actually surrounded by these two properties, uh, which he just purchased from the same property owner who would be selling to these two solar farms. He also owns two properties south that, that are on both sides of forty-seven, one in Hampshire's area and one in, uh, Pinky's. And in fact, we've had conversations with Pinky to have a co-development agreement for those two properties because he owns them both. This development would seriously hinder his development plans.
Okay, so there is a negative effect that has been raised by, by a property owner that neighbors these operations. Thank you.
I just, a couple of things. One is, um, pardon my ignorance because I've never read the King County developments, you know, the, the way their, um, decisions are made. And I couldn't find anywhere in the packet, maybe I missed it, that said that they approved it. I don't know.
Oh, it hasn't come from, in fact, the meetings are coming up. There's the first meeting is next week in town.
So that's for the committee meeting?
Yes.
So, or planning and zoning, it's not for the board?
So February eleventh meeting, uh, two, so coming Tuesday will be the zoning board of appeals on February eleventh, and then I've got the other developer, the committee, zoning committee of the county board, and then the county board, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I, because I'm looking to see approved or something, and it didn't. So thank you for that. Um, and then have we contacted our own county board member to talk about this, to get them to advocate for us?
No.
We wanted to have all our duck's in role.
Oh, yes.
Actually, we've really never used, we've never, I've never spoken to our.
He reached out during a couple of hearings and stuff like that. He's not, uh, really involved.
He's, he's come out to our meetings, um, but I know he has a mobility issue right now, so.
So, so we were, my thought was to have everything done on paper so we can say that Pinky, Pinky has a resolution and sent the letter. We've sent the letter as part of our normal building product development process. We have a resolution because I, in the conversations that I've had with our King County Board Rep, he wants the whole story one time. Not conjecture, not, not maybe it's gonna pass or it's not gonna pass. He wants it all done at the same time. So he has teeth when he goes to the meeting.
Okay.
That's been my interaction. Maybe I've read them wrong, but I know that, that it seems to work best that way.
Does he know this is coming?
Uh, it's a very big topic at, at King County right now.
All right.
And, um, actually, uh, Metro West is going down to Springfield on the fifth and sixth of March. And this is on their topics of things to bring to the legislators and have conversations. We actually have a confirmed meeting with the governor's office uh, while we're down there, and this is on our list of topics to talk about. Again, it's not a matter of anybody being opposed to it. It's a matter of give us a way to work with these guys or give us a way to, 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 to help this situation and say, look, we're not opposed to solar. Solar can go anywhere you want in the village. However, if it's in an area of targeted growth, if it's in an area of a commercial corridor, it doesn't make sense to go there because then for the next thirty years, this is going to dictate the zoning all around. Great. Any other questions, comments? I will entertain a motion approving a resolution and objecting and protesting to two solar farm facility projects at, uh, on ranking road in Hampshire, King County, Illinois. So, second. Questions or comments? Mr. Kirk, can you call a roll, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Spouse Stringie.
Hi.
Swell.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Spohler.
Hi.
Mr. Piss Six Zero.
Thank you very much. Next, we have the building report and the engineering report and the financial report. Please review them at this time.
Mr. Khan, the, um, on page one sixty-three, all the numbers are the same here.
Yes, it's. Calendar or so starts over.
Okay. I'm thinking seven months in advance. Okay, you're right. This is calendar.
Any other questions on the, any reports?
The, um, Park and Rin, this is waiting on final grant documentation. That's another, is that a state grant or a federal grant?
Federal, federal grant.
So that one may be.
Actually, there's two grants that one state, one federal.
Okay, so that may be a risk as well.
Is E, has EEI received anything from the, uh, condition of the well? Had that was pulled out of, uh, number twelve?
Uh, no, but the contracts were just signed. I'm gonna pick up the notice to proceed today. They're mobilizing tomorrow and they start planning to get the work next year.
That should be interesting.
I can't wait for that.
It's almost like opening the safe, I'm sorry.
There is a S. Any other questions?
I do for Miss Lyons. On page one seventy, um, for the, for the TIF financing. I just wanted to kind of ask about the fact that we've got two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars in revenue that's come in and we were anticipating two hundred and nine, seven hundred. So I'm just trying to see where that's coming from.
Um, so at the time that the budget is done, um, I estimate the revenues that will come in. Um, and that one is very much an estimate, um, based. You don't get the same information to make your projections that you do, that you have available for the general levy. And this, this, these are monies that come not only from the village, but they come from the school district and all of the other taxing entities. So I'm kind of guessing at what their levies will be that will actually come to us. So, um, it was more favorable this year than my estimate earlier, which is great.
We can always use the TIF file.
Can we go back to the engineering report? We kind of jumped.
Sure. No, we, we've been jumping all over.
Mm-hmm.
Um, State Street. Um, is that, is that just a grinder resurface?
Yes, we're also doing some repair on curb and gutter replacement of some midlands.
Okay. They're gonna replace all the sewer dips.
Yes.
Every forty-five feet? Okay, now you go back to financial.
That's fine. Page one seventy-four, uh, the pension trust summary.
Yes.
Um, it's the rep, the revenue is double of what was anticipated for the budgeted. And then the expense is far less than what we expected. So I'm just kind of trying to see where those payments are going and when we're doing them. And if that's part of the reason why there's some, so, um, yeah.
Take your third.
You take the extra revenue.
No, they're laughing about the car horn.
Oh, yes.
It might be Lori's car, that's where.
Oh, no, no. Um, so again, these, um, these funds are invested in, um,
various, um, equities and so we're at the mercy of the stock market, which has done better than my projections. I really have no idea with respect to that. Um, with respect to the expenses, um, the refund of contributions is the biggest line item that's what I'll call missing from the actual year-to-date. And what we do is we budget for anybody that has.
Sorry, Lori, it's just like.
Is it my car?
It is your.
Why?
Are your keys in the door?
My keys are in my pocket, in my jacket.
I'll, I'll, I'll take it. Nice, this is your.
Carry on.
No, you can, you can go in, go get it and stop.
You're, you're good. Carry on, I'll take care.
I'm not sure how that happened.
Somebody probably drove by.
A kid.
Chief's out there making sure all the.
He banged on it or something, right?
Just ramming it through the window.
So the revenue, so the employer contributions, um, that was higher, which was the five hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we thought it was.
So, so with respect to that, um, the five seventy-five is the annual budget and we contributed the whole amount already. So, um, when it says year-to-date, uh, budget, that's only seven twelfths of a budget. So that's the reason why the, there's a big difference there.
Okay.
All right.
That answers my questions. Thank you.
Miss Lyons, you're free to go to address your.
Sorry.
All right, all of the financial questions will have to be on hold. If there are hearing, if you're hearing none, we can move on to the other part of the agenda. Uh, if there, if we're done with the questions about the, if, uh, accounts, we have a regular accounts payable and accounts payable personnel that we can do without. Mr. Hedges or Miss Lyons, I hope we can stumble through it.
Other questions?
Just kidding.
Sure, that's fine. I'll make up answers, I suppose. Don't worry. First is the accounts payable personnel and the amount of seventy-two, seventy-four.
Summed up.
Second is.
Hi.
Questions or comments? No other questions or comments. I've seen some vote has already stranded.
Something about a lot of people that takes a screw in leg over.
Oh, aye. What?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Spouse Stringie.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Spohler.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Piss Six Zero.
Next is the, uh, the regular accounts payable in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents. And what?
Why did you say it like that?
I don't even know how I said it. But it was to impress you. Did it work? It, it, yes.
Two questions right now, um, for, would be page thirteen.
Thirteen.
And that's for the Stock Valley Community College and I believe that's for the police officer training. Is it for one officer?
Two.
It is two then, because it used to be five thousand-ish and so it's grown up to some thousand five hundred.
This is training and lodging and everything else. So it's, it's a very reasonable price again, in my opinion, or fourteen days of training.
It's also normally fully reimbursed.
Yes.
It's not, it's not a guaranteed reimbursement, but as long as the state has the, the funding, um, it's reimbursed.
So bid for reimbursed soon.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
How much radio sixteen eight was mentioned up? I thought we just upgraded all of them.
That was, so that was, that was approved by the full board. We purchased two additional radios for the two additional spots um, that we have.
Finally got the bill.
Yeah, they finally got.
Okay.
Actually, a few months ago, I missed it myself. In all honesty.
Finally paid them.
Okay.
We threw the answer.
Page fifteen.
Page fifteen.
Um, Vasselli Law is almost twenty thousand dollars this month.
We finally, we finally got all the.
Multiple then?
Multiple months. We finally got the invoicing and stuff worked out. If you remember the last time, uh, Mr. Vasselli said he was volunteering.
Ten, okay.
He lied.
And now he doesn't even want to come back.
So this is for October, November and December?
Right, yes.
Okay, so we still have January and February. We don't have the January.
We don't have January yet.
Okay.
I think we're only in the sixth day of February.
We have a miscellaneous, like the second line, that's fifty-five hundred. It's a pretty big number for miscellaneous.
Does that all make sense? The details you'd like to, but a lot of their bills come in when they have conversations with us, phone calls.
Okay, so that all gets just dumped into one.
Two categories. One is, well, several categories, you can see.
Yeah.
But there are some just get lumped into miscellaneous.
Okay, and to be honest, we're, we have, we have worked through some logistical.
Yeah, there shouldn't.
Categorization issues, so, yeah.
I spent my weekend going through all of those bills.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Vasselli apologizes. But I, we also spent a lot of time with his accounting people. I think we gotta work that.
Okay.
Any other question?
Order extra snowword and sign in case any of them get cut down.
Well.
Sorry.
Oh. Can't post.
There, that's just the number we intend to put up.
Yeah, because they're all over the village.
Got it.
We probably didn't buy any actions because Dave knows we put them exactly where we had the old sign.
This had to take a while.
What's that?
It had to take a while to cut a sign down.
Chainsaw.
Not with a metal sign.
Yeah, those are metal posts, metal you post.
Yeah.
No, they're metal.
And there's a reciprocating saw and a battery up there.
Yeah, but it.
In this call.
At night, at nighttime, it's gotta be loud.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
We have canvassed the neighborhood.
Yeah, we have.
Have not located the signs.
Or anyone.
Only one house hasn't answered their door yet. That happens to be the house across the street from where the post came down. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular accounts payable. Second, questions or comments? Hold on, please, Mr.?
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Mr. Spouse Stringie.
Hi.
Mr. Robinson.
Hi.
Mr. Spohler.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mr. Coles.
Hi.
Mr. Piss Six Zero.
All right, Village Board Committee reports. Invaded breath, we wait to hear from Mr. Kelly about BBC.
I swam Wednesday here since three.
And any other updates you'd like to provide, sir? Fantastic. Um, we have, uh, new business or other announcements. So do we have anything for new business?
Hampshire Community Bingo Night Saturday.
That's under announcements now.
Oh, that's announcements. I thought we were doing both at the same time.
So, no, why don't you lead us into announcements? That's called professional segment.
Motion to adjourn. Uh, yeah, and, and all are welcome. It benefits the elementary school.
When is it?
It is Saturday at four P M.
B Y O B.
It is at Hampshire Middle School in the what, what do you call that, the lower?
Do you gotta bring those big marker things to mark them?
Nope. Nope, they got, we got the fancy boards with the sliders.
Yeah, plenty of prizes, plenty of raffles.
What's it cost to get in?
Free to get in. I think a bingo board is ten dollars? Ten dollars.
Cool.
All goes to a good cost.
Last uh, last year they figured, when I think it was like five hundred bingo boards or something like that, but they.
Yeah, I want to say they raised around eleven thousand-ish for the school. And as trustee Kelly knows, knee-deep in school. Um, we, the, the Hampshire School Organization, basically the version of the PTO. They pay for that playground, they put it on playground for those kids. So, that money goes, it all goes to the kids.
This is the second year now that they kind of, you brought the bingo back, right?
This will be your number three.
Great.
Yes. Yeah, and it's awesome. It's fun. My kids love it. Come on up.
Um, I have a couple of announcements, if anybody else has anything?
I just wanted to ask because I was a couple minutes late, the where the village ties came from.
So St. Charles Boromel School, it's on Catholic Schools Week, and so they wrote us uh, letters and cards to the village staff and then village trustees.
Actually, they came over here first, and they all sat in their chairs, they had a little meeting. Uh, Karen.
And um, and you'll see, and you'll see behind us that we have uh, some buildings that they designed for a project about architecture. So they designed buildings from our, from our downtown, and that's, they were looking for a place to put them, and so we said, just put them in a boardroom. And we'll like, and we'll love. And so uh, they were really appreciative of the time the staff takes when they come to visit, and um, they also felt bad for trustee Foder because she didn't have enough candy in her drawer, so they brought her candy.
You might want to check your drawers, apparently they were uh.
Radio?
They were violating.
They were, they placed one. They uh, they brought a whole bag of the sending. A little concerned, but um, I just wanted to thank them for their return of candy. That's awesome. Yep, much appreciated. You know, keeps us.
Keep the candy coming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we've had a, we've had a couple of birthdays this week. So Ms. Lyons' birthday was yesterday. And, and Mary, Mary uh, in the office here, it was her birthday today. So do you guys wanna, uh, you guys, I wasn't here for this, but you guys started the tradition of singing happy birthday to staff. Do you guys want to do that again? I didn't do it.
Oh, yeah, I'm not gonna be the only one.
Oh, no, she's saying the future.
And there's cake. Yes.
Yes.
Do you guys want to sing? You guys know, Ms. Lyons isn't working?
No, Lyons is telling us not to.
It's fine.
So did, so did my village's advantage in mind.
He told us not to, but we still did.
But not sing, okay.
Singing not follows after. Well. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Um, one other thing, um, WGN Radio, uh, from Chicago has contacted us, and they're gonna come up and do some interviews next week. Um, and take some footage around town, and um, we are going to be WGN Radio's your hometown the last week in February. The last, so the last Thursday of the month. Um, they are, we're, we're trying to work through who they're gonna talk to and that kind of stuff over the next couple week or so, we're gonna figure that out. But um, there's some advertising opportunity that we're gonna have and that kind of stuff, and so uh, more to come on that, but I just, I don't think. Yeah, we'll have another board meeting, I think, before the.
We have not had any bad weather, you watch. Watch what's gonna happen.
So, uh, but we're pretty excited, we're pretty excited to be featured on WGN Radio. Let's, we can highlight some of the progress that we've done out here and some of the work, hard work's been, stands is done to accomplish, and.
And it's radio, not TV, right?
WGN Radio.
When we got the, when we got the air.
The last Thursday of the month. The whole day will be dedicated to the village.
That'd be the twenty.
No other news.
The whole day. So like, they're gonna, they're gonna have, they're gonna, they're gonna feature us on their website, and they're gonna feature us on their, um, some of the advertisements, and they're gonna interview at different shows, they're gonna interview different people from our community. So.
Definitely try and get the Historical Society in there.
I don't know, that guy doesn't like to talk.
That's okay, we get somebody else.
As long as whoever it is can say Sesquicentennial, we're good.
Uh, we're not, oh, on that, on that, thanks to Ms. Stuler for um, getting that together this week. We met as a community group to talk about the hundred and fiftieth uh, celebration, because I can't say that word. And the hundred and fiftieth has a nice ring to it. Well, so our birthday is November ninth, eighteen seventy-six, so the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our town is November ninth, twenty twenty-six. And so we're, we met with the Library Park District, um, help me out here, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Village, and the Historical Society, and and the last remaining, and a few residents, and the last remaining person who was alive that helped plan the uh, centennial in nineteen seventy-six, Mr. Roger Paddock. So gave us a really bunch of cool ideas about what he had done, and so, um, the village isn't taking this over. The village is trying to come up with a way that we can all kind of carry the water, and, and we're leaning toward the uh, idea of rather doing one big event like in the summertime or something, because nobody's gonna come out and party in November. We're trying to think about, um, a bunch of smaller things, incorporating it into the things that we already do. It's the street dances and, and uh, ice cream social and sock hop and that kind of stuff. And uh, we've reached out to Koo Creek Days this week, and uh, Carl seems very uh, excited to be a part of it. So we're gonna try to figure out whether we, you know, have a big float in the parade for the hundred and fiftieth or something.
Heck, yeah.
Absolutely. So, anyway, it's, we've got, you know, we've got a little over, a little under a year, I sprayed, a little under a year or so, but it's, the time's gonna go quick, so we're gonna try to figure out the right way to do it. We talked about banners downtown, banners on the streetlights. Forming a sub five oh one C three, so people could do donations, selling shirts and that kind of stuff, and so we're trying to figure out the best way to do it so that people aren't that, you know, there's a lot of government bodies involved, right? So you don't want people giving donations to the village for us. It's just, it gets muddy when you start doing that stuff. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can do it where it's clean for everybody and everybody has a say in it, and we're kind of celebrating the fact that we've been around to have them.
I have a question.
I would. I may, let's have.
And I apologize, but I've been staring at this image behind us. Are we having a um, look-alike contest?
Um, yeah, he's right here.
For people to start, you know, playing.
They're hanging up on the wall.
Because I know it takes time to throw that much attention there, so I was just curious if we were going to.
Don't, 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 they'll take that one.
There.
No, I, I gotta show this like a lot. Where I look like him.
I, I will.
I was just, is this on here?
No, I thought it would be.
I think it's, I think, I've always thought it was funny that Samuel Rawl is right over. Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Yes.
If I could ask too, because some of the pounds, when there's a hundred and fiftieth, get celebrated for a full year at the events. Is that what we're doing?
We don't know yet.
Something that we're looking. Okay.
That's what we're, we're leaning toward kind of thing.
Okay.
But we don't know, I mean, we had our first meeting on Tuesday, and it was just because, and it was really based on the fact that the Park District said something to me not too long ago, and then several residents have come in here and asked, what are we doing for the hundred and fiftieth? And it was like, who's, who's gonna do it? That was the big thing, is who's gonna do it? And it's, nobody has the time to really dedicate themselves to another cause, you know? So we figured that we're all here, we're all doing this together, and let's figure out a way to get it done and come up. And that's why, like, I mean, we talked to Roger, and Roger said that um, they actually brought in like a house and had it set up somewhere, and they were selling swag out of this house downtown. And that's how they raised money, and they actually sold shares, one of which is hanging on the wall out there for the centennial and stuff. So, I mean, it was really, they actually, what did they, you said they had a rocking chair contest where people were on State Street for three days rocking in a rocking chair? And then, and there was controversy around this?
Yeah, they had a rocking chair contest. They had um, like a little mystical fashion. You know, the old fashioned, it was old fashioned days back then. Um, but there were a lot of different.
But you said there was some controversy over the rocking chair contest.
Well, some of the ladies needed more breaks than others, I guess.
So. Well, more, more on that to come, but um.
We do have events in November, just all. Some of those on straight.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do something on that.
Well, like I said, we're gonna come up with, I don't disagree with you, but we're gonna, we were, we rather than just do one event in November, we were leaning toward the fact of, like you're saying, is we're gonna celebrate it for a longer period of time. And it'll culminate with something, we don't, we don't know what that is, but there is a time capsule at Siler Park that uh, that was buried in nineteen seventy-six and then was brought up um, twenty-five years later. And apparently they added some things and took some things out, like the cake they thought was a good idea to put in the.
So. It might have been hit a few times, so.
And so, there's, 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 there's more on it to come, but I wanted to bring that up this, this evening because a lot of the residents and a lot of people have asked about the hundred and fiftieth, because the centennial was such a big thing here. Bill has shared um, that they have a lot of artifacts, and they sold buttons and coins and commemorative books.
Didn't the village, didn't the village sell like uh, hats or coffee mugs?
Well, that's what we were trying to figure out is to, so I will be, we're trying to figure out a dollar amount to get started for sure. Um, but I, I will be asking the Budget Committee to, to come up with a way to fund some of that. But rather than the village buying the shirts and then selling the shirts and that kind of stuff, we'd like to have somebody, whether it be the Chamber of Commerce or a separate five oh one C three to give the money to, so that we're not having to exchange money and have the clerk, or the office staff having to sell shirts and people in that kind of stuff.